When coming here tonight, we didn't know what we were going to see when we put out the signs. So it's good to see so many people here. And not all of them are staff, so that's helpful. We do have city council members here tonight. Eleanor Pardini, Sandy Phillips, Jenny Schmidt, Karen Wood, and Ray Crater. And Sean Falkingham's in the back there. I'm Mayor Barry Greenberg. We have staff here tonight. And we've got most of our police department, which means we must have a pretty safe city. Because, you know, they wouldn't be here if there was crime going on out there. We have representatives of the school district, I see. A lot of different members from the, from our residential community and business communities. So I'd like to welcome you all here. And we're going to move along pretty quickly because we do have some, we want to get some input from everyone at the end of the, in the second part of this. So I'll let Anthony Traxler is the acting city manager, and he's going to give your report on the state of the city.
Thanks, Mayor Greenberg. If I need to use the microphone, let me know. My voice is typically carried, so if you can't hear me, let me know. I'll go to the microphone.
Can you use the microphone, please?
Yeah. Is that better?
Yeah.
First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming and taking time out of your busy schedules to come and help participate in tonight's town hall event. I'm also going to take a little bit of time to promote Maplewood Citizen Academy. For those of you that have not attended, it's a fantastic event. It's a seven-week event that we put on in the fall. So roughly, the first week of October is typically when we start. And that'll carry through mid-November. You'll basically get to know all the nuts and bolts about city government in Maplewood, city government in general. And we really, we flesh it down to the department head level as well. You'll meet with each department head, we'll go through, look at all the, tour all the facilities, look at all the equipment, and basically give you the day-to-day activities of what everybody at City Hall does. So if anyone is interested, look for that. We're probably going to start advertising that late summer, and it'll start in October. I'll start with the, flashing back in the last year, some of the happenings. The one that's received the most attention is the retirement of longtime city manager Marty Corcoran in September. Marty was retired in September, and he was here for 36 years, which is a real rarity. It's a tribute, not only to Marty, but to current elected officials and past elected officials that were able to provide the stability to help Maplewood, the wonderful thriving community it is today. The city council right now is in a comprehensive planning and visioning process to hire a new city manager. And they are also meeting with an executive search committee. And they should have the new city manager hired within three to six months. So there can be some big shoes to fill, but the council's been working on it tirelessly for some time now. City Hall staffing, nothing's really changed in the last year. Roughly the last year and a half, the public works department's lost a couple of employees through attrition. We're, we've got a tight budget coming this year, and we're hoping in the future to replace those employees. That's out of the general fund account. Proposition P, everyone knows about the sales tax that passed a couple of years ago in the county. We've used those revenues to hire two new police officers with Prop P funds. We've also bought a lot of equipment with these Prop P funds. The one that's been in the papers and most notable, we've got the most questions is the firearm simulator training equipment. We share that with Webster Groves, and we've updated that. If you do come to Citizens Academy, like I'm trying to promote, you actually get to use the training simulator. It's kind of a neat, a neat tool to try. We've got a new library director in the city of Maplewood. Terry Donnelly retired after many, many years. Kathy Condon Butcher has come to us from the Festus Library District. And she was a director there for many years, so she's got a lot of experience. And I'm looking forward to the library's continued growth in the city of Maplewood is under Kathy's leadership. Some major purchases in the last year. We got a new pumper truck recently. We purchased one. We retrofit the existing fire rescue truck. And we've purchased a street sweeper. This is all in the last couple of months. We don't own any of this equipment yet, but we've put in the purchase orders. They're manufacturing these. We should receive all three of these pieces of major equipment within the next year. Maplewood opened its 10th park in September. Yes? Oh, sorry. We opened our 10th park in September. And for a town that's a mile and a half square, having 10 parks is a real luxury. It's very good for a city that size to have 10 parks. The park is the Maplewood Skate Park. I don't know if anyone's had a chance. It's located just near the library and the Maplewood Family Aquatic Center, just north of here. You would be shocked if you haven't driven by after school and seen how many children use this park. And the Parks and Recreation Commission worked on this for a long time, so did the city council. It focused, the group is the tween group, the teenager and the pre-teen group. I have a son who's in the next room right now. He's 18, gonna be 18 in another month. My daughter's 12. Anyone that has kids that age knows how hard it is to get them off screen time, whether they're playing video games or looking at their phones. If you go out there, you'll see that a lot of kids who would probably be cooped up inside or out, out using the parks. And so that skate park has been very, very successful. We purchased the majority of that park through a grant through St. Louis County Parks Commission, so we thank them for that. Updates on housing over the last year. If you'd have talked to me 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago, I'd have said there's nothing new to report. But people want to move to Maplewood. Anything you read about it, it's a hot, hot real estate market. In the last year to 18 months, we've constructed eight new homes. That's probably eight more homes than we've constructed in the past five decades. Three of those were complete demolitions and reconstructions. And we have five more homes under, that will be under construction in the coming year. We've had numerous apartment complexes that have been retrofitted and/or completely reconstructed. Some of these were just general updates. But we've had some, a lot of success with some problem properties. If you think 71, 78 Manchester is our most recent success. This was a nuisance structure that was uninhabitable. It was condemned. There were electrical problems, raw sewage in the basement. There were a lot of problems with this structure. We had a developer come in, spend $2 million to renovate this. They've opened up 28 studio apartments, and within two months, they've already, they're already at 100% occupancy. Yes?
Well, first of all, thank you for the mayor and the council members for organizing this. I'm so excited. Maybe it comes up in the GALLERY WOOD, but the question, I just noticed in looking at the graphs, the population has declined quite a bit in the last 10 dozen years.
Mm-hmm.
And the second thing, vacancy rate is not that small to explain that and why those things are happening. At one point, is those things are going to be discussed at the gallery walk?
They are. They will be discussed at the gallery walk. Does everyone hear that? We're getting into, we'll get into the handout, population handout at the gallery walk if we need to. And actually, the primary emphasis is the gallery walk tonight. So if you have additional questions on what I'm saying, just grab me. And you can grab any of the department heads or any of the employees here if you have specific detailed questions. So I'll get back, roughly go back there. The other, only other apartment complexes, as far as additional population that we anticipate, we don't have plans yet for the Sutton Station Apartments, of those of you that are aware of it on Hanley. But out of the 174 units that was constructed a couple of years ago, they're at or near 100% occupancy. They may have future phases. We haven't seen plans for that yet, but we anticipate that may be coming down the road. Laura, do you mind going ahead and giving us an update on new businesses? Laura Miller is our community development director.
So it's been a busy year for us. We've welcomed three new businesses down in Derry Creek Plaza. And we have a restaurant that should be opening up in the next couple of months. And then in our downtown area, I know, seeing the chatter on social media, we've lost three of our longtime businesses, restaurants, and food purveyors. It's, they've left within the last few months. However, each of those spaces have been leased, and so we will have three businesses opening up in downtown area in the next couple of months. We've also seen some growth with some of our local businesses, and they've decided to keep their businesses here in Maplewood, and they've just relocated to larger spaces. So over the last year, we've seen about 30 businesses leave, but we've also seen about 30 new businesses come in. So we're, the Maplewood community is doing well.
Thank you, Laura. And that is, that is really something that you've seen most recently, in the most recent years. It's a trend that's been building. But basically, if we have a vacant building, a vacant commercial space, it's not vacant for long, because people do want to be in Maplewood, which is great. I'm going to look ahead to items coming up in the, in the upcoming fiscal year. We're going to start our budget work sessions. I hinted earlier that we're going to have a tight budget year. We're going to start, we're going to have a series of work sessions for anyone that wants to get into the nuts and bolts of it. It's all public process. Our first budget work session is going to be held on March 24th in the City Hall Council Chamber's right here. It's going to start at 6:00 PM. And we'll probably have budget work sessions every other week following that date. Probably, we'll probably end up having three or four total. The only change in the budget this year, aside from it being very tight, will be, I've met with Karen Dilber, the finance director. We're going to submit for the distinguished budget award, which is essentially Best Practices for Government Finance Officers Association. And we feel that it'll be a much more reader-friendly document than what most people will see now when they go online to look at it. So we'll make those changes. Several projects of interest. The most visible coming up this, in the, in the next year and the subsequent years would be Manchester Road in front of City Hall, basically from Hanley Road to Big Bend is going to be repaved. That's a state-owned road. They're going to be doing that this summer or fall. The remainder of Manchester Road, basically Big Bend East, which is city-owned. I applied for a federal grant last year. We received it. That portion of Manchester is going to be repaved in 2022. It just takes a while to funnel through these federal projects. In addition to repaving Big Bend on the, on the city's project, basically east of Big Bend, we're going to be doing major sidewalk replacements, which includes improved ADA access at all intersections. The street trees, which are in a sorry state right now, if you've driven down that stretch of Manchester, are going to be enhanced and improved. So the overall streetscape will be much, much nicer. Good for the business district, good for the city. Aside from the street trees and the, and the surface and the sidewalk, there's a, Maplewood is one of the most walkable communities in, in the United States, the business district. We score very high on a walkability scale. We're always looking to make those improvements. So we're going to add a bump-out pedestrian crossing at Sutton and Manchester on the southeast corner, which will make it easier to cross Manchester at Sutton. In addition to that, the 7300 block, or think of the Schnucks Block, we're going to have a mid-block pedestrian crossing. If you're, if you've been out at, I'm glad you're getting, I'm getting a little prop for that. Because if you go by there anytime, people are darting out in front of you constantly. And so we're going to look to do that. And if you know where, if you want to look at where it's going to be, there's a fire hydrant right in front of Boogaloo, which on the, one side is Pennsies, on the other side is Paramount Jewelers. That's where it's going to be. We're going to use that natural, no parking zone to bump it out. You'll basically only have to cross one lane of traffic. You'll have a safe area there, along with a pedestrian signal flashing. It's not going to stop traffic. It's just going to be alerting traffic that there's a pedestrian crossing. It'll last 15, 20 seconds, whatever it is. And you'll only have to cross one additional lane of traffic. And if there's any business owners in here, all these plans, we're basically going to keep a, a zero net loss of parking, because we may pick up a little bit on the north side. We may lose a space on the south side. But that's something that's coming up, that will be 2022 for that portion of the phase. We're going to have a lot of outdated equipment, particularly in the fire department that needs to be replaced. The problem with that is, is the revenue to do so. A lot of the equipment in the fire department is basically funded through a quarter-cent fire sales tax. The sales tax was essentially implemented or adopted or approved by Maplewood voters 17 years ago in 2003. So we are going to be asking voters, so please go vote, and please vote yes. We're going to be asking to bring that quarter-cent sales tax, not a property tax, a sales tax, bring it to a half-cent, which would essentially mirror Prop P for police funds. It would also mirror our park sales tax, as well as our street sales tax. So that's going to be on the ballot April 7th. Right now, that account is about $310,000 to $330,000 over budget. And the fire department has, still has needs, especially with evolving changes. And some of the equipment that the fire department has, as well as the police department, gets very pricey. So that will be coming, look for that. Literature will probably be going out in early to mid-March on that. Citizens Bank Park, if anyone knows where that is, it's right at Marshall and Manchester. Citizens for Modern Transit. And AARP is doing a transit stop transformation project. And it's not going to be anything major, but as you're driving down the street, there's going to be some enhancements to the actual bus shelters. We're going to be separating those, and we're going to be adding some signage there and some kind of artwork there as well. So I anticipate that to start within the next six weeks, and should be done in about two months. So you'll notice that. There's been a lot of questions about the railroad crossing at Sutton and, and Greenwood. Unfortunately, there's been, oops, sorry. Can you hear me now? Hello? All right. It's not working right now. Basically, unfortunately, if you go in the last year alone, there have been three accidents there. If you go the last three years, there's been four accidents at that crossing. Three of the four accidents were vehicle collisions. There were no injuries or fatalities, that's good. Unfortunately, the most recent was a pedestrian was struck and killed. So with those four accidents, it factors into the federal, federal department, or, pardon me, railroad administration, the federal railroad administration. And basically, what they're saying is, you've lost your ability on that quiet zone. We can keep that quiet zone, we can keep a grandfather if we make some improvements. So I anticipate in either this fiscal year or 2021, we'll be making changes to those gates. You have two gates now. You have a gate system of four gates, which is much safer. And once that, once that is installed, we will essentially maintain that quiet zone status. Along that same stretch or that same general area, you probably have a lot of, read a lot about the, or the Great Rivers Greenway or the GRG pedestrian trail. I anticipate that will be started in 2021, if you'd have asked me six months ago. Unfortunately, GRG's grant fell through. But that doesn't mean the trail is not going to happen. I do anticipate it's going to happen. However, I anticipate it'll be bumped back a couple of years. I've been meeting with Great Rivers Greenway's representatives about this. And I should know a lot more in June. So if it's an item of particular interest, feel free to hit me a call, and I'll know a lot more in June. But I do envision that probably happening in 2023. They're going to use their general revenue fund budget of GRG to do so, or look for other grant opportunities. There's also opportunities for the city to look for grant opportunities there, because that's considered a collective, so eligible for federal funds. So we're looking at all of our options. The thing I want to do is make sure, if we're going to be doing a trail, if a road needs to be replaced, or some of the sidewalks need to be replaced, we do it all as one overall project. Save money through economies of scale and reduce the impact on property owners and business owners in that community, or in that area. Penn Score out here is going to be replaced. I know the school district's probably happy about that. I know we've got a lot of people. It's, it's long overdue. That should be done this summer or fall at the latest. So that's happening soon. And last, but not certainly least on projects, the Maplewood Family Aquatic Center, I talked about how excited I was about the skate park for the tween age, for the young children. We're going to be adding a splash pad. And that will be probably closer to the library, the north portion of the existing pool complex. We received a grant to do this through St. Louis County Parks Commission as well. And as part of that grant process, we are also going to be adding out in front of the li, or of the pool structure and the grassy area, we're going to add a large native plant area, plant display area, that's going to have informational signage, so you can basically go up, view the various plants, and you can also read information. Basically, it's going to be a promotional piece for native plants within Maplewood. And that should take place, we'll probably not start construction right when the pool closes. We do not want, obviously, impact the pool. So probably late August, we'll probably be bidding that, probably bidding that in June. Last but not least, we've got some data gathering, there are upcoming studies. I know traffic and congestion is one of our topics tonight. There are several conflict points around town, whether it's commercial trucks driving through residential neighborhoods, people speeding through residential neighborhoods. The school district, you guys know we've been dealing with issues, because it's a positive. Everyone wants to go to the school district, but it does create congestion issues. So we're going to work with the school district for the areas around the school district, and then we're going to do a citywide traffic study. It has been over a decade since we've done one. So that will be in the upcoming budget year. Hasn't been approved yet, but the entire council said it would have been the budget, so I anticipate that'll be approved. Here, along those lines, it's been since 2011 since we've done a community-wide citizen survey. That was our last survey. So we're going to do a citizen and business survey. It's got, again, it's been since 2011, so it's overdue. Proposals are due at the end of February. So I anticipate the council will spend a month or so going through those qualifications, interviewing firms. And based on the proposals we put out, I anticipate you'll be getting calls around May. So if you get those calls, please respond, and we need to hear what you think about.
So there's going to be citizens' reasons meaningful?
Absolutely. It's going to be a long question of the year, and basically, then all that data will obviously be available, and we'll put it online. And, and the goal is to try to update these more often than every eight or nine years, maybe every four or five years. And you want to kind of keep the current, you know, current surveys kind of out of whack. And then last, but certainly not least, the census is coming up. If anyone's interested in volunteering or always looking for workers, please make sure you mark that down, because we need to make sure we get an accurate count. We're going to move on to the, meet at this town hall, which is the, the, the gallery walk. I'm going to turn it over to council member Eleanor Pardini. And keep in mind, I here all night, if you have specific questions about any of that that they talked about, just grab me. And we've got every department head and every, and a lot of city staff here, if you have any other questions, just grab us. Sorry about this.
Hi, thank you so much for coming. We are all really excited about this part of the town hall. So we have designed this section of the town hall to be an opportunity for you all to talk with each other and also talk with council members and staff. So we have, hello? Does this work? Okay. We have six posters set up around the room. So we have, over here, we have traffic, parking, and streets. In the back, we have public safety, which includes fire, law enforcement, and justice and courts. In the back, we have housing, so things like housing access, housing affordability, maybe aging in place. Over here, we have parks and rec. We also have the Senior Advisory Commission and other issues around seniors. And Mayor Greenberg is going to be talking about a senior advisory commission that he would like to, that is starting soon. So if you have interest in that, please stop there with Mayor Greenberg. And then we have a poster for other concerns. So the goal is, it would be awesome if we leave tonight with these posters full of your ideas, your questions, things that you care about, things you would like to see us working on, things you want to see. You have Post-Its in your hand. Everybody should have got some Post-Its. You got a pen. And so you can write down your ideas, questions, concerns on your Post-Its, and stick them onto the poster board. And you can mingle all around the room. We're all going to be spread out around the posters. Also, our staff from our law enforcement, our fire, our public works, and the city manager are all, and Laura Miller are all going to be here, and we're available to answer questions. So we will have 20 or 30 minutes for this part of the town hall, and we will gather together at the end for a synthesis. Any questions before we get going? Okay, so you can, question?
My, my question is, like, if, if we put something on a post-it note, like a question, how do we know it's going to be answered? Because it seems like it may not be answered tonight, since we have all of these.
Some things might not be answered tonight, but it is a way for us to understand what you all are thinking and care about and wondering. And it can help us set our priorities for what we're working on. And we can try to answer questions in future work sessions and meetings. So some things, there might be answers in your small conversations. And other things, we'll collect the questions and try to answer what we can.
So just as a suggestion, since maybe other people have this, maybe when you collect some questions, you could, like, answer questions and.
We'll, we'll have some, yeah, and we have about 15 minutes for synthesis at the end. So we'll try to answer what we can. Okay, so you can, and then also, if you have a question that doesn't get answered tonight, you can leave, leave comments or questions on index cards and leave them with us at the end of the night. Okay, so we are going to go ahead and spread out, and you all can start mingling around some topics that you are interested in. I'm going to do, we're going to do our best to just kind of synthesize the, like, themes that came up on each poster. Some of these we might have answers to. A lot of them, we're not going to have answers to tonight, but this helps us know what you're thinking about. And we can start working on these things together with city staff over the, the next few months. And we can share this list out on social media and the internet. So why don't we go ahead and do this one first? Okay, so this, this is the Senior Advisory Commission, and do you want to just say a few words about it, Barry?
How many hours do we have?
Two minutes.
Okay. You know, again, the people that I talked to, I'm looking for people that want to participate in the commission. Aging in place in Maplewood is not the easiest thing to do. We have housing issues. We have financial issues with seniors. We have technology issues that need to be addressed. Health, social counseling services. There's a whole range of things that I've put together, because not only am I dealing with being a caregiver for a parent, but, you know, I'm getting there myself. I'm retiring this week, and so, and so, you know, the idea is that, you know, I'll have more time to do some of these things, but, you know, not everyone is in the position to be able to, to do everything that they want to. So what we need to do is, we need to establish priorities with regards to, you know, the senior commission would be an advisory board, and they would help city council, they would come to city council with priorities, very much like the Sustainability Commission has. They've made some great recommendations. We've implemented those, and they've changed a lot of things that have happened in the city. So with regards to, you know, our senior citizens, you know, people are concerned about housing. There's concern about aging in place. We've got houses that were built in, at the turn of the century, that are not conducive to living in if you're, if you can't make it up a set of stairs. Typically, we don't have any full bathrooms on the first floor. Second floor is sometimes hard to get to. I've seen houses in my travels where people didn't use the second floor for the last 20 years, you know? But they don't have any alternatives. You know, we don't have any housing in Maplewood. I was just at Stonecrest with Mayor Thompson, where my mom is. They've got five facilities in Richmond Heights. We don't have any. And we, and our, our housing, the apartments that we have for low income aren't conducive whatsoever to live in if you have any type of physical disabilities. So there's, there's so many things that need to be done. I was mentioning also that the, the police department had, they got new laptops, so I've got 10 laptops that were salvaged from the police department, from their cars. We've reformatted them, and they're available for use by our senior citizens. And I bought 12 tablets myself. So the idea is that if we do this internet cafe, people can take these things home, not just use them at the library. And then we can get together, I've got commitments from Stone Spiral, from C. Oliver, from, from Living Room, from everyone. You know, they'll have a senior day there. You can get together, get taught how to use these things, and teach other people how to use them. You know, people need to be able to communicate with their kids, you know, so they need to be able to play games, you know? And so, you know, and we have kids that can teach you how to do these things. And they do it really well. I'm getting cut off, so. Anyone that want, that knows some, that wants to participate, or knows someone that wants to participate in the senior commission, please contact me, and we can. please contact me and, uh, we can go over, you know, my list.
And I ju-, I just logged some of these things and again, there's some interest in how to, how to get involved and you can email, um, Mayor Greenberg at, at B-Greenberg, at CityofMaplewood. Thank you. Okay, um, so, this next one was, um, kind of other stuff. So, we had a lot of comments about sustainability, the composting, um. How do we not cut trees down and plant trees and do tree studies? So, kind of a lot of sustainability questions and interest.
And while she's writing, we, uh, Public Works is gonna be offering, uh, composting bids. Anthony, for how much? The composting.
They were twenty dollars, but they sold out within about thirty-six hours. We asked for more than they were supposed to. We're gonna try to reapply for that and hopefully get more. And we're also, uh, along the lines of trees, we're doing a trim grant, which is gonna be happening, um, early summer. We're gonna do a complete tree inventory. And anyone will be, we're gonna put that database online as well and keep that updated on a daily basis through the new app they offer. So, those are a couple of, um, items of interest along the lines of trees and sustainability.
So, we, um, we had a couple of questions about, um, stormwater management and, um, drainage issues around town. We have some concern about, um, sales tax. We have, um, seeking more information about, um, our, our budget conditions and we're going to have multiple work sessions, um, coming up in March and April about. Yeah, so we're gonna have multiple work sessions about the budget, if you wanna come and, um, participate in that process. Some questions about, um, improving communication at, um, with the library and maybe some drop-off spots for library books around town. Um, some interest in streets, um, in sort of, in cleaning. This one came up also in the, the streets and parking ones, so like cleaning and litter. Also, some interest in murals, um, so some kind of, um, city beautification kinds of things. Um, and then we had, uh, several about communication. So, we have, um, could there be a citizen or business spotlight in the Maple Leaf newsletter? Do you still have the newsletter that used to come out? This town hall was great, could we have a town hall at least annually? I think that sounds fantastic. So, some kind of communication and engagement.
As you can see, we need to define the problem before we solve it.
Karen, hey Karen, do you wanna read this one?
So, we're not gonna have a whole lot of solutions tonight.
Yeah, do you wanna kind of do that, read the parking one?
Okay, so, right, there's, let's see, there's a lot of them about speed, uh, traffic, speeding on different streets, people not, uh, stopping at stop signs. Illegal parking on, um, on Sutton, which makes it really hard to make the turn. So, it's a lot of parking, um.
So, some parking and speed enforcement.
Yeah. Here is about pedestrian crossing, um, on different streets and.
So, a lot of concern about pedestrian safety. All kinds of cross, we saw crosswalks. It's really helpful to have these particular intersections that people are concerned about, because that helps bring it to our attention.
Question about a, a street sweeper and could we post days when that's gonna come by? And more trees, um, on the city-owned street lawns? And another one about litter, that one we've already got. Drainage, I think we already have that one too, some more drainage issues. Long stop sign, lights. Additional parking to serve the core businesses.
Yeah, so kind of parking for both residents and businesses popped up in a couple of comments.
I think that's probably, there's a lot of repetition around the same things, uh, pedestrian safety. You've already got that. So, okay, I think that's about the main things on this. Can we do the first one, Benny?
Can we just, uh, post this on your website, the, the?
Yeah, the topics, yeah.
Topic, so we can discuss it later.
Yeah, we can do that. Public safety.
Uh, community policing, walking streets. We have bikes, right, for the police department? And you guys are gonna be doing that soon?
Yeah, we ran that out once.
Okay. Try to wait till it's a little warmer?
Yeah.
Make sure the city gets the proper, uh, equipment to protect them. It's council looking into alternate uses of Prop P. Yeah, more Prop P about public safety, what can we use them for? Is the, uh, is the community judge operating with racial bias? Is judge, is our judge treating people fairly? Would you consider social workers as first responders? Uh, are we putting people in jail who can't make bail? Worried about police mistreating people based on race? And, uh, yeah, speed on residential, speed on residential streets, so.
And the Prop P, there was questions about both, like, what else can it be used for and also concern that it shouldn't be used for anything other than it was originally voted on. So, a whole package of questions about Prop P.
With the addition of the two, two officers, that allows us to be able to put, uh, officers on bicycles too. Before, we didn't have enough, it wasn't a matter of not having bicycles, we didn't have officers.
So, a lot of conversation regarding affordable, or housing affordability in Maplewood. How do we keep our community, um, affordable? Especially as we talk about socioeconomic, um, affordability, or, uh, diversity in Maplewood. Some questions regarding the, uh, the school district and prospective residents. How are we introducing them in the school district? The, uh, information that we got regarding, uh, the vacancy rate and the population decline and how did those two things coordinate? The occupancy permits, um, maximum occupancy and pet limitations. And, um, some things related to, uh, again, uh, nuisance ordinance, um, evictions and actions on the property-related nuisance ordinance violations. And then some things related to, um, uh, design and review board and, uh, design of some of the homes. How, you know, how does that work, how does that process work? And then also, uh, regarding permitting process for people who are remodeling their homes. What's that process and how do we get that information out there, so?
Last one is parks and rec. I like this year, this one, a six-year-old asked that they want to see a picture or a prototype of a splash pad. And then someone else suggested maybe having a splash pad at one of the playgrounds or other parks. And then, uh, someone asked about can Maplewood participate in the River to Bear cleanup? Um, we have some more tree things here. Is there a tree inventory or ev-, or any, um, planting master plans? And then guidelines and rules for tree trimming and removal. And then someone just had a, a comment that said that they love our little pocket parks in the community. And then a comment about trash at the skate park, um, and asking for a water fountain. And then just a general question about what are we doing to protect our environment and prevent further damage?
Okay, is that the end?
That's the end.
Speaking of parks, we do have a, an opening on the park board. We're, we're going to be discussing as a, uh, uh, as a council, uh, boards and commissions and how we appoint people and also whether we going to also have alternates to some of the boards, to make it easier for people to serve. So, there's plenty of opportunities to participate in city government, whether through the citizens academy, through boards or commissions, through budget, uh, the budget meetings that we're gonna have. And there's other opportunities. One of them is coming up in about seven minutes, which is a city council meeting, which we, uh, you know, we would love to have this many people show up for our council meetings and participate. Uh, there's a public forum portion of that where you can address the council and, uh, with a, any issues. Uh, otherwise, there's, uh, the agenda's online and you can see what we're gonna be talking about and if you have any input with regards to any of those topics, you're free to come in and, and talk with us about those, uh, those topics. So, uh, as far as where we go from here, obviously, we weren't able to answer all the questions. But the first step is to come up with the questions, so that we can look at what we, and see what people are concerned about, what they're interested in. And I think we've done that. And so, you know, as a council, we need to figure out how to implement some of these, see whether, you know, these are valid concerns. A lot of them have already been addressed. And so, the idea is that, you know, we wanna let you know that we're listening to what you have to say. As far as, you know, we can't solve all the problems, uh, unless there's some type of budgetary, uh, magic that we're, you know, not familiar with. But we have to establish priorities every year and, uh, with the help of the staff and department heads who do a very good job of, of establishing their own priorities and submitting those to us. So, uh, uh, we appreciate the work that they do and they've kept the, the city on a, uh, a, a pretty decent course fiscally. But, you know, there's gonna be challenges up, coming up ahead that, uh, Anthony alluded to and we're gonna have to address those or we're gonna have to make some hard decisions as a council. Anything else from council members?
Just thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for coming.